All right, at 6:30, why don't we get this on the road here. Good evening, welcome to the Harwich Planning Board meeting of the 27th of June. This planning board meeting is being held in person and also possibly available live on broadcast channel 18. I'd like to call this meeting to order and also notice that according to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair. Anybody going to be doing that? Okay, so we can start the meeting without that hanging over us. I'd like to invite you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get into the first and second items, I'd like to dispose of the two items that are going to be continued before heading into the bulk of the meeting. So for case number PB 2023-12, continue from April 11th, 25th, and the 9th of May. Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC through their agent Kent Truschella have applied for a special permit for an alternate access driveway. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-18K and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Properties located at 86 Mile Street, Assessors Map 14 Parcel B9. Property is located within the residential low-density RL zoning district. This case is being heard in conjunction with the next item, which is case number PB 2023-04, also continued from earlier meetings of February 28th, April 11th, April 25th, and May 9th. Again, Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC through their agent Kent Truschella have applied for a special permit for a two-family dwelling in order to build a second residential structure connected by a roof or a series of roofs. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51N, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. The same property is located at 86 Mile Street, Assessors Map 14 Parcel B9. The property is located in the residential low-density RL zoning district. Applicants attorneys sent a written request to continue this case until the 25th of July. I'd like to hear a motion to continue the case.
I'll make a motion that upon the applicant's attorney's request, a written request to continue case PB 2023-12 until 7:25:23, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion for the second item?
In case PB 2023-04, again, at the request of the applicant's attorney for continuance of this case until 7:25:23, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I abstained.
We have one abstention. And both or...
On both.
For both, okay. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad you didn't have to endure that first round here that we're now going to go to, which is PB 2023-07, which has continued from March 13th, April 11th, April 25th, May 23rd, and June 13th. Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC are seeking a site plan review and use special permit for an increased and allowed hotel slash motel use by more than 7,500 square feet of floor area as required pursuant to the Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Section 325-9 and 325-51. Proposed building expansion is to create additional hotel rooms and to renovate buildings at Quosset Resort and Golf Club. The property is located at 2173 Route 28, Head of the Bay Resort, Map 115 Parcel S1-3 in the Commercial Highway 2, CH-2 zoning district. Good evening.
Just for the record, if I said through you...
Please.
I'm not a voting member on this matter.
Okay. That means we are a...we have six, so it's a five majority for this, that we need, a supermajority? Okay. Very good. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Rose, and I'm here on behalf of Round Cove, along with John Bologna and the rest of our team, which I'll introduce in a bit, here on behalf of the...their project to raise and replace three hotel motel structures on resort site. We have been continued several times, and at the last meeting, just to review, this project was referred to Town Council. And to my mind, it was mostly about the process or the alteration and expansion of the hotel motel use. That we just last week got Town Council's letter, and I'm hopeful that you all have a copy of the Town Council's letter. And the gist of it is, it addresses many things, but what's specifically important here tonight is that it says that the jurisdiction of the planning board is for the site plan review special permit. And the relief that would need to be granted to alter and expand the hotel motel use is the providence of the ZBA. I was talking to Andrew, who I work for, and for the last decades, I think that this has gone through the planning board whenever Quosset needed to alter or expand what was on site. And this is...was a surprise to us, but we are willing to do what Town Council says and go through that part of the special permit process with the ZBA. In addition, there are a couple of other points the Town Council's letter mentioned that I think might be important just to frame tonight's meeting. The Town Council considers the site to be a whole site with all of the parcels included, this one road parcel, the Four Cove Landing parcel, and resort parcel. They mentioned, and I think it's important, that before a building permit should be pulled, an 81X plan has to be filed to officially recognize that these parcels are merged. They also recognized that you could have two primary uses on one parcel. There's no prohibition in the zoning bylaw against that. So the two primary uses here are a resident, a pre-existing non-conforming residential use, and also the hotel motel use, which can be allowed by special permit. And a further clarification, the hotel motel...oh, sorry. The residential use for Four Cove Landing is a pre-existing non-conforming use that's been in effect since at least, as far as we can see, since 1997, when the McLennons purchased the property under an LLC. It was actually a two-family use at that time, so back since 1997. So with all of that said, we are here before you tonight to ask for a site plan review special permit. We need a site plan review special permit because we are increasing the floor area of the three structures that are going to be replaced. We're also reconfiguring the parking area. That's the parking area that's near Rose Cottage, up above Buildings A and B. Under 325/55, which is the site plan review bylaw, there are required submissions, and it's said that our application shall conform to the Planning Board rules and regulations governing subdivisions of land and site plan review. The former town planner issued a staff report prior to the last hearing, and in it he said, I quote, "I reviewed the plans and found them to be complete and well-designed. I recommend that the board vote to approve the use special permit," which is now longer going to be requested from the planning board, "and the site plan as designed." 325/55E states that the site plan shall be approved if the site plan meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Planning Board rules and regulations. It can be reasonably conditioned...the approval can be reasonably conditioned on three different areas. The first is reasonable measures for screening. The second is deals with the convenience and traffic safety of vehicles and pedestrians on the property. And the third relates to surface water drainage from parking and driveways, making sure that it's efficiently and safely disposed of. And those are the three areas where conditions can be approved. We will deal with the appropriateness of the site for the use and whether it would be adversely...whether this project would adversely affect the neighborhood in the zoning Board of Appeals review with the special permit. I'd like to go through slides that we presented last time, and I've provided a copy of those for you now. We found that it's difficult to see those on the screen, so I've numbered those, and everyone has a copy here, as long as...as well as Council's probably others. I'll try to do this without messing up the speaker. So if you look at Slide 1, it's just an overview. It's two-end from the first page, so it's numbered one. It's an overview of where the work would take place. You can see that the hotels...or sorry, the hotel structures are all centered on Round Cove. That's where all of the hotel motel units are. A and B are on the left-hand side, and Building K is on the right. The next slide, number two, is an aerial view enlarged, showing Buildings A and B and K. You can see that Building A is very nearly on the coastal bank, if not on it, and Building B is set back somewhat from Building A. Our marching orders when we first started meeting with the town, the primary marching order from the town, what we heard from the town was that it...these structures, particularly A, needed to be moved back from the resource area. And as you can see, in that part of the resort, that part of the property, it's constricted as to where Building A could go. So what's before you is a sighting of Building A that's conforming as to setbacks. It's conforming, and A, B, and K are all identical structures. They're accessed in different ways, and K, it's able to be accessed from the higher hill because of the topography. Each of these buildings has an ADA unit, but they're conforming as to size, they're conforming as to setbacks. The paths have been redesigned, and grading has been done so that both carts to service these properties and guests can use, whether they have disabilities or not, can use the paths to access the different units that are going to be built. There are no changes in automobile traffic. I should back up and say, just for review, there are 12 units here that will be built. The buildings are two stories, where the current buildings are one, and each unit will have four additional units on top. There's no change expected in parking or traffic. The parking is designed to be compliant. There's a redesign of the parking area that's adjacent to Rose Cottage, which will service A and B and Rose Cottage. There are two conforming ADA spaces, and there's a third accessible space to the right of the redesigned Rose Cottage parking area. As I've mentioned, each structure will clearly be 50 feet from the property lines. The heights are conforming. Each is roughly 29.4...29 feet, 4 inches. The drainage has been designed to meet stormwater guidelines. Most of the drainage to be dealt with is drainage from the roofs of these three structures. That rainwater will be collected using a filtration basin and designed for 100-year, 24-hour storm events, and the same goes for the hardscape. If there are questions about that, my colleague, John, would be happy to answer more questions that you have. Lighting is essentially a continuation of what's provided now. The bollards that you all saw on site when some of you visited, those same types of bollards, the same height, would be provided here. There are also some post-lightings. Those would be roughly the same. What's helpful here is that this site is relatively isolated. There is truly one neighbor who is adjacent to the resort, and that neighbor is above, and so above in terms of elevations where Buildings A and B in particular are. And so any lighting from bollards or from the post-lightings should be efficiently screened There's an existing wastewater treatment facility, and landscaping is consistent...what we've presented is consistent with what's required under the Harwich zoning bylaw. And it's truly more than that. Dave Hogg, who has been the landscape architect on this site for decades, is going to continue what he's been doing at the site. When you all were there, you saw a lot of mature trees, you saw detailed designs with shrubs and flowering plants. That same type of design is going to continue here. In terms of screening, there is...you could condition any review or any approval of a site plan based on screening of adjoining neighbors. And we put a lot of time into trying to make sure that the screening was adequate here, and again, more than adequate. But I'd like you to go to now, and again, if you have any questions about how perspectives are shown here or any of the plant material, Dave Hogg is here, would be happy to answer questions. But if we skip to...if we skip to page number 10, which is entitled, "The Building A and B Enhanced Landscape Design," it's dated 6/27/23. It's dated 6/27/23 because that's today's date. This is the same plan that we presented back in April. This is the plan we presented. We have the first plan there just to show that there was consideration over time, and ownership tried to make an even more robust plan. You can see up in the upper left-hand corner, that's the property line for Two Round Cove. You can see, they have a patio that's partially actually on the resort property, but that's the area...that's the area that the resort is trying to...both for the resort's benefit and neighbor's benefit. And if you look at page number 12, you can see a perspective drawing, perspective sketch truly, of the enhanced landscape plan and the proposed buildings from the level of Two Cove Landing. You can see in the lower left-hand corner, shows where that perspective would start. And you can see the height of the trees. I want to underline that the trees are going to be significant, and they're going to be larger trees. They're going to be evergreen in this area, white firs, cryptomaria, white spruce. They vary in height, but the heights are between 14 and 16 feet, and there's a group of trees that are between 12 and 14 feet, and another group of trees that are in between 10 and 12 feet. So this is showing what it would look like installed over time. You know, these will be taken care of, they'll grow, so they'll even be higher than this. We did not try to push the screening to the property line. We have it set back. It's at the top of the hill, which was a benefit because, you know, the trees are not on the slope of the hill. They're at a full place where it'll make the biggest impact for the neighbor, but it's not pushing aggressively into the area that they have been using. At this time, I'd just like to recap. We're here for site plan review special permit. We believe that the plans that we've presented are adequate. We believe that we have been responsive to what's required of the Harwich zoning bylaw and the guidelines for site plan review. With me here tonight are John Bologna, Dave Hogg, and also the architects are online. And we also have Alton Chung, who's the Regional Manager for Quosset, and also Josette Willis, who's the Acting Manager on site. And so if there are questions to be answered, we'd like to answer them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board at this point?
Just a question.
Please.
Is this our area to make a judgment on or not? Is it going to the zoning?
Well, they're asking us for site plan review special permit, so...
But the council looks like it's giving us different advice?
Well, I think it's kind of limited us what we can decide on, so...
Okay. It's...my understanding is it's site plan review only for the planning board, and then we have amended our ZBA hearing request to ask for a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming conditions from the ZBA.
So our scope has just narrowed?
Right.
Correct. Thank you.
So why don't we hear from the other side at this point? Thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Hmm? Oh, good. So, do we have any public before we get into the opposing?
They are the public.
I know, but I'm saying like the public at large, I mean, yeah, yeah. So, all right, please, go ahead, sorry.
Well, as you know from our previous meetings, we have significant substantive concerns, excuse me, about the effect that the second story of Buildings A and B is going to have on the Shelton property. The Sheltons are here this evening as well. Those concerns relate to noise, vacationers on their decks enjoying themselves, we hope, but making our lives, the lives of my clients, less enjoyable. We're concerned about light pollution. We've made several suggestions to the applicant, such as darkening the glaze on the upper windows so that there wouldn't be quite as much light shown that would affect our client's property. And, you know, there was no consideration given to that request. But I think on the procedural side, seems to me that the normal order of applications should be that if you need zoning approval for your project, you should go to the zoning board first. So you have the conditions imposed by the zoning board of appeals, and then you submit your site plan so that it complies with the conditions imposed by the zoning board of appeals. And the...doing it in the manner which the applicant's proceeding this evening leaves us with a situation where the first ZBA meeting that the applicant can qualify for is August 30th. We think it's inappropriate for this board to vote on this application. It's inappropriate both for use of town resources and for the convenience of the public, including our clients, because if the board were to vote, you know, there are appeal periods from your vote, but we won't know what the zoning board's going to do. So in order to protect our client's rights, if we feel an appeal is appropriate, we would file an appeal. The zoning board then acts in a manner that effectively avoids your approval or requires a resubmission to you, and so that we would suggest that's really inappropriate for you to take any sort of formal vote on this matter until the zoning board has acted. Once you have the zoning board decision, then you can move forward with your final denial of the project, he said optimistically. So I think the...I would really like you to consider that. Mike Ford's going to address some other procedural matters as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to just touch on a couple of things that council for the applicant reviewed with you at the outset, and they have to do with the Town Council opinion. So as I understand it, what council has blessed for this board to review is the site plan, and that's what has been presented tonight. To the extent that the site plan application is a separate special permit, it would seem to me that the special use permit, which council has indicated that they applied for under Section 9, that the board doesn't have jurisdiction over, would need to be withdrawn. And so I would anticipate that perhaps that would happen, although I don't know. But it seems to me that, to clarify what you're voting on, the special permit, the use special permit, would need to be withdrawn, particularly where, as council has indicated, relief is now going to be applied from the Board of Appeals under the non-conforming section, so they can make a determination of whether, under that section, this will have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. I found an instructive that council indicated that it is that special permit which will judge the effects on the neighborhood. So I think the way this is being presented to you is that, under the site plan review special permit, the effects on the neighborhood are really not into consideration. Council indicated that there's three areas of... Council indicated that there's three areas of that you can condition, at least if you follow the bylaw, under section E, 1, A, B, and C. And that the effect it might have on the neighborhood is really not part of that inquiry. And let's assume for the sake of discussion that she's correct. Well, if she is, it seems to me that all the more reason why you should take Mr. Riley's advice and find that acting on this is premature because the board who's going to decide the substantive effects that this project may have on the neighborhood is the board of appeals. And certainly if I was on the planning board, I'd want to know what the outcome of that was before I approved a site plan. It seems to me that that position is also consistent with 325-55, Site Plan Approval E, where the first sentence says, "If the site plan meets the requirements of this bylaw." You don't know that it does. And the reason we don't know that it does is that council has raised a variety of concerns, one of which they're following, and also indicated that if there is a merger of these two lots, and council recommended for that to occur, that there'd be an 81X plan filed, that there should also be the need for variance. And so where council has raised the need for variance, it seems to me there's a clear question of whether or not what you're being asked to vote on as an approved site plan, whether it meets the requirements of the bylaw. Because certainly something that requires a variance is otherwise prohibited, and therefore would seem to me can't fit within the four corners of the first sentence, which they have to satisfy before they get down to determining whether or not they're going to condition the plan. So with respect to that, I will tell you that from where we sit, while we found town council's opinion instructive on several matters, and I think it was a good thing the board asked for that, just so you are aware, we will be taking a different position with respect to the merger, that this is already one lot. And I think that's probably an issue, Mr. Chairman, that's properly before the zoning board maybe, and not necessarily the planning board. But I think you should be aware that, with all due respect to town council's advice, that the cases that she cited that suggested that these lots merged are cases that deal with vacant lots that are undersized, that come into common ownership or control. And yes, the doctrine of merger requires those to be merged in order to be developed. Whereas here, you have a fully developed residential lot and a developed commercial lot next to it. And those cases certainly that she cited don't have application of the facts that are before us. And in addition to that, if you had an opportunity to read our supplemental memo to town council or to the planning board and the board of appeals that was sent to town council, you'll see that the 2008 permit that the applicant was here before you on, saying that that was the permit that had merged the two parcels, that the applicant subsequent to 2008 did not, in all of their filings before this board, take a position that they had a merged lot. Indeed, in 2014, they went to the building inspector and applied for a building permit for improvements to the single-family home, including the second kitchen and a variety of other permits, and filed a site plan that was just that parcel, got a building permit, and the building permit on it says it shall be used as a single-family home. And that's six years after the permit that they suggested to you the last time we were here, was the permit that caused them to merge. So there's a serious issue there, I'd suggest to the board respectfully, as to whether or not there has been a merger, and as to whether or not what is before you, which I think is important to your inquiry tonight, is a plan that meets the requirements of the bylaw. And I think there's a serious question as to whether it does or doesn't. And if it does not, as Mr. Riley said, then this is more of an empty exercise because it seems to me you need to know that that issue has been resolved, that the units that they're asking you to approve the site plan on in terms of all of the various site plan criteria, in terms of parking locations, style, screening, and so forth, that where they're located, they can legally be located there. Because, as you know, our zoning bylaw says in the special permit that they're now going to make application for to change, extend, or alter, or enlarge, or raise and replace a non-conforming structure, that section of the bylaw says, "on the same site." And the units that are involved here were originally created by virtue of a special permit before the board of appeals many years ago, and they're still in that location. They were upgraded in 2004, according to the building permits at town hall, not through a special permit, but a permit as of right. So the question of whether that house lot that is subject to a notice of lease to a third party that they don't control, to use it as a house, really has merged because it does affect whether these new buildings can be built over that lot line, whether they really can qualify for the special permit that they tell you that they're now, have made application for. So for all of those reasons, Mr. Chairman, we ask the board respectfully to delay your action on this until such time as those important issues are sorted out before the board of appeals. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
So, if I may, I'm a member of the board, I'm not voting, a voting member on this. I would just like to ask a practical stand, from a practical standpoint. I suspect that if this board moved forward and made a decision, that that decision would be appealed, if we acted on that this evening. I'm, I guess from a practical standpoint, asking of the applicants, if you are still going before zoning board of appeals and we continue to continue this application, there's a very different procedural posture for you to be in the middle of a lawsuit on a decision versus then being able to just continue a public hearing and get your decision after the fact. So before the board spins its wheels for another, we've had multiple meetings on this. So before everyone spins their wheels, procedurally, I guess I'd like to ask your opinion if you are maybe of the mindset that maybe you would want it to go through the zoning board of appeals as well because then you may be in a situation where you wouldn't have to refile and start from scratch again, where you would at least be, you'd already be noticed in the middle of your hearing, and this board could then make its decision without making a decision, having it appealed, and then having to start from scratch or wait out a lawsuit, so.
I think I understand what you're saying. We're concerned, because this is a, well, we're hoping to make it a year-round site, but right now it is a seasonal site. And so, like, to ultimately correct me, but to certain extent, the time to build is in the fall and, you know, through the winter. And frankly, we've probably lost that window for this year. But there's a giant problem if we then lose the window for the following year as well. When this is approved, they will build it. And so I hear what you're saying, but I'm also concerned that I can't control what other people do and I can't say they're not going to appeal the ZBA, and then we'll be back with the planning board with that under appeal.
I understand your point. I just, I look at it with the timeframes.
I would like to clarify. I wish the ZBA was already recorded. I am driving the 81X plan to Barnstable and recording it as soon as I have it in my hot little hands. I think that once the 81X plan is recorded, then this is all under common ownership. It can be considered a merged lot at that time. I think that that is, to me, it's a red herring because we have everything other than Coastal is just flat-out busy and people have been ill. And so that's why that's not filed now. I think that part of my colleague's argument is not necessarily, I don't have that as heavy as weight. I do believe from talking to the administrator for the building department that we would be able to be heard in July for the ZBA, not in August. I could be mistaken with that, if that was my understanding.
Yes, I understand your point that you may be in appeal there as well, but
Right.
this process is certainly, I think, further along than anything else. So I would just, I mean, you're, you're...
Does anyone, I guess...
You started in March, so, and we're approaching July 1st.
Right.
So it just, to me, looking at it, it seems like you're, you might lose that whole...
I thought in May that this business of the merger was going to be done. I thought when you were here, it was basically, had been filed or was kind of, you know, not de jure, but de facto, or it had been kind of submitted, or, but I guess that was not the case.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, yeah. My colleague, Todd Chapman, has been out on medical leave. The plan has been completed, it really just needs his stamp and final review. So we're working very diligently to get that processed. Maybe if I could just help a little with the board, a bit more perspective, because the plan, similar plan was approved back in 2000, or was 2006, 2008, but everyone remembers what happened in 2008. That plan was approved on the condition that you'd have an 81X filed to merge the lots at that point. And again, everyone knows what happened back then. The project never got completed, and that permit expired, and it just kind of fell by the wayside, no action was ever taken afterwards. And all honestly, when we took this project over, I personally thought it was already done. And we were going on the assumption, because it said on the plan, to be merged, you know, to be expunged, the interior property line. So it wasn't until we really got into it, the look ask is, well, that was never recorded. You know, we had the plan on record, but it was never recorded. So anyways, had to go back, different surveyor, he had to go back and prove it himself. Long story short, is that, is the way to get into where it is, so. I promise you that will get done, I just assure you that that plan is ready, it just needs to be stamped.
What's the turnaround for that kind of a application?
There's not an application, it's just a...
Submission.
It's a record, you submit it, it gets recorded.
It's just registry and that's it, yeah.
There's a Miler plan, so you have to take it.
Got it. Just simply erase the line.
But it still hasn't been recorded yet, so.
Still has not been recorded yet.
And that, from my perspective, I know that's, I know it may be just a matter of getting it recorded, but it isn't, as of tonight, when, if this board decided to take a vote tonight, it isn't recorded. So that's just another reason.
I guess if it's possible, in order to weigh this, is, are there any concerns of the board about the adequacy of the site plan? Is that something, I mean, is there anything that is of concern? Because I would hate to get, if we did delay, we did continue, I'd hate not to have heard, you know, something that we could change.
The one thing that I heard tonight was that there was the business of not connecting with the neighbors on, like, light pollution and a couple of the other...
Oh, we've connected. I disagree with, I disagree with that.
Okay.
We've had discussions, and we've had discussions about the screening over and over. We've had, I just, we've had a meeting at my office to see whether we could come to some resolution. I think my perspective is it would be hard to come to an agreement without taking the second floor off of Buildings A and B.
Right. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a follow-up on this 81X issue, and I appreciate the comments from representative from Coastal regarding the preparation of the plan back in 2008, when it was suggested that they would do that back then. But the facts are that in 2014, Coastal did prepare a plan, and it was a plan submitted with the building permit for Four Cove Landing, just showing that lot. And on that, a permit was granted on the basis of that being a single lot, and development rights were obtained by the same owner, and they made all those improvements to the house, using that separate lot, and got the benefit of it. And so what's happened since they were required to do it previously and are relying on that again, is that they went in the opposite direction. And frankly, I think those things are important when it comes down to whether or not there's really been a merger. But that'll be decided in a different forum, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sheila, quick question. Were there any notes on this from the town planner?
Just the previous notes that were mentioned by council for the applicant.
Mr. Riley?
Just very briefly, Marion is an eloquent speaker with a beautiful, soft voice, and I have difficulty hearing everything. But with regard to our request regarding light pollution and some sort of shading on the upper windows of the buildings, we did have a meeting, we had a discussion about many aspects of the project in the hopes that we could reach an accommodation. My understanding at that time was that Marion's client had denied our request for some sort of shading on the windows. If that's inaccurate, perhaps you could correct the record then.
If I may, I think if the... I believe at the last hearing, we talked about lighting because at that point, the use, the extension of the use was within your jurisdiction. And that's where this part of what we're going through now, I think, is a little bit, is going to be handled by the ZBA rather than the planning board. But we did talk about having timers on the exterior lights on the second floor of A and B. I know that we talked about that, you know, in terms of glazing the windows. I don't know whether that was, it was heard. I don't know whether it was rejected, or whether it was, that just hasn't progressed. But I know that we talked about timers on the exterior deck. And motion sensors possibly.
Right. I remember that conversation. So is there anybody else in the public that would care to address the board at this point? So what's the will of the board?
So just a question. Since our scope has narrowed on this, and Mary has made the point that, you know, is, are we doing cart, horse, horse, cart? Because if we do this and it's appealed, just everything starts over again, is my understanding. Correct? Or could be, right? So it's the, the question is the purview of the zoning board. Do they trump the planning board in this instance? Do we have any other?
So we would be, this board would be responsible for the site plan special permit. Any expansion of the, our council has said that because they're adding rooms, presumably adding space, it's an expansion of the hotel motel use
Right.
on a non-conforming lot. So that would be the purview of the zoning board of appeals. So instead of this board doing both a use special permit and a site plan special permit, it's really just a site plan special permit for us. And then ZBA deals with what they have to deal with. And both of those, in both of those decisions, ultimately, once they're done, get filed with the town clerk's office, they have to set out a 20-day appeal periods where anybody can appeal and go forward from that. My question was a practical one for the applicant, saying if you're, if
Are we doing this in parallel?
if we make a final decision, it's a final decision that's subject to appeal versus letting the other process go through and then, and then... If we make a final decision, it's a final decision that's subject to appeal versus letting the other process go through and then, and then.
Which seems the more logical thing to do.
Right, but we also have, you know, there are also timeframes that, that are considered, so we're still in a continuance. So, you know, we're continued meeting. So at some point, we, if the applicant wants you to make a decision, I, I guess you could make a decision or you can choose not to make a decision. But when you don't make decisions, things become, things can become final without your decisions.
Correct. Dave, did you have any concerns here with the plan or?
I don't know what your plan is, so.
Any concerns, absolutely. Can I resolve them? I'm not sure.
Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Based on the conversations that we just had and following up with Mary, I think it would be smart for us as a board to continue. And I don't know if it's appropriate condition of the continuance, but that we don't make a decision until the applicant has gone to this zoning board and had a decision from them.
The applicant either agrees to continue the public hearing or you make a decision.
Right. Okay.
To continue.
The applicant either agrees to continue the public hearing or you make a decision.
I'm not making a motion, I'm just.
No, but that's what I'm saying, like, the applicant has to to be agreeable to, to continue the public hearing or else. You need to make a decision.
Right.
So where are we?
You should ask the applicant.
Right.
Would it be possible to have a straw poll before I make a decision?
Well, it looks like there's a lot of indecision.
There does.
So I think you're teeing up a very sweet opportunity here to close the deal. If this is your, if this is the way you want to look at it, I don't know.
Okay.
When does the zoning board of appeals meet in Ju-, in July? When would you know whether you were going to meet in July?
I don't have that in front of me. I have spoken with Alicia and I've submitted my amended hearing request. And we've, we've requested the butters, I mean, list. And so I think, I think we're on track for a July.
I'm just curious what their meetings are.
We have the chair of the zoning board of appeals.
Please.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Brian Sol, I'm the chair of the zoning board. Actually, I thought you were on the agenda for tomorrow. This case.
I've actually withdrawn or continued, asked for that to be continued.
Okay. So it's been continued. Okay, so in July, the, we meet the last Wednesday of the month, that would be July twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, Alan, I didn't see.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Would the, would the applicant be amenable to a continuance?
When could, when would be the earliest we could be heard after July, the ZBA? August eighth.
August eighth, yeah.
It's like one week.
Yeah.
All right, yes.
Okay. We have a deal?
We have a deal.
Okay, let's hear, we've got a motion then.
Make a motion to continue case PB twenty-two-three dash oh-seven. Continued from three-fourteen. Do I have to read all that stuff?
For the.
From today.
Okay. Sorry, I'll restart. Make a motion to continue case PB twenty-two-three dash oh-seven. Ram Cove Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Land.
Go ahead, I'm just gonna ask for a point of privilege from the chair, once you make your motion.
Okay. And for Cove Lan-, Cove Landing Road Owner LLC. Continue to
August eighth. No earlier than six-thirty.
For motion and a second, any further discussion?
Who's the second, I'm sorry.
Craig.
I think Mr. Ford has a question during this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to get some clarity. Is, is the special permit, the use special permit being continued too? What, what's the status of that?
Well, isn't use off the table here, so I mean, that's.
I, I believe it's going to be off the table, but if I'm continuing, I'll continue it and then, because things could happen with
All right, that's fine.
The ZBA, so.
Just trying to get clarity.
Keep it as it is now. And I'm, it is most likely that we'll withdraw that at the next meeting.
Good question. Fair enough.
Would it be possible for me to collect my packets?
Absolutely.
If I could use those.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, we did. Thank you so much.
So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
One extension.
One extension, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Could I take a thirty-second break?
Yes. Hey, I'm like so off balance, all my notes are at home. My whole packet is at home. I got, I'm like, I feel like I'm kind of like about forty degrees off axis, you know, like, the walls aren't spinning, but.
There are too many pieces of cards in this hall.
I don't, Paul, we're tired. Effective yesterday.
That's not on the record. What happened?
We're still on.
Well, I mean, it was.
No, but we're in the, it's not on our agenda.
It is not.
We did not take, but we didn't take a, we didn't do a recess.
Okay.
That's my point. Stone Horse tonight. Do you continue these two? The next one is Stone Horse, yes.
Correct. Stone Horse.
Okay. Which is why Mr. Riley has.
Which is why Mr. Riley enjoys this room so much.
Just don't want to go home.
So comfortable here, right?
Very much so.
It's like Anita, who's now moved over to the Historical Society and now she's back in here meeting with the Historical Society. She's like, we gotta do this in a different building, we gotta do it in a different building. Okay, fine, no problems. Okay, our recess is over. We now move to case PB twenty-two-three dash twenty. Main Street Stone Horse LLC through its agent attorney, William Riley, seeking a modification of the site plan special permit PB twenty-nineteen dash thirteen in order to reduce patios and walkways and increase parking. Application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three, twenty-five dash fifty-five. In accordance with Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine. Property is located at eight seventy-eight Route twenty-eight, assessors map twenty-five, parcel A two. Property is located in the commercial high density CH one zoning districts. Good evening again, Mr. Riley.
Good evening. Bill Riley on behalf of Stone Horse, Main Street Stone Horse. we have a situation that has developed over several years. The, a great deal of the issues that we have before us today are really the result of COVID pandemic. The, our initial application had to do with the use of the property for foreign seasonal workers, primarily those who would have J-one visas. They're a ninety and a hundred and twenty day visas. The vast majority of those people are, are from Europe. They arrive here, they don't have cars, they use bicycles or public transportation. So we no sooner got this application approved and the building construction began and, and the borders were closed. No J-one visas were being granted. Mr. Rudnick, you know, had the building, one building built, the other building kind of started. So he had, you know, not that it's your concern, but it just, you know, very significant financial issues as a result of that. So as the construction was proceeding over nearly a multi-year period, the changes were made that should have come back to you and did not. The, in my conversations with Mr. Rudnick, who would be here tonight, but for an injury he suffered, fracture of his tibial plateau, which makes his ability to get around very, very limited at this point. In any event, so he had a great deal of, a lot of conversations with the former building commissioner, Ray Chesley. In fact, the, the, Mr. Chesley made recommendations to him, which he followed. Even though Mr. Chesley didn't have the authority to make the changes, Mr. Rudnick never ran them by me or anybody at the town. So the reason why there's only one patio is that Mr. Chesley thought that it would be a good idea to have a single patio that was located directly between what we call the office building and the new buildings at the rear. So rather than, as Mr. Rudnick recounts it to me, rather than spreading out the social aspects and noise associated with socialization, it would be concentrated in a single area, in between the two buildings. And would be easier for the onsite managers to control. So that is why there's only a single patio. I'd like to continue to have a single patio, as shown on the as-built plan I submitted. The other, other than, other than that, I think you have a report from Jack Me that, that the two new buildings are fully compliant with the building codes. and we're seeking no modifications of, of your approvals in that regard. By the way, by the, by the town council's opinion, you didn't have authority to grant it anyway. Now that we, I mean, how many years were you using that provision? I mean, years and years, right? So the, the so the main structures are compliant. Really, there are two significant changes. One is just a single patio. And because we now have a lot of H-two-B visas, those are multi-year visas, a lot of those folks have automobiles. And so we need additional parking. And so there was a gravel area that had, I believe, had been existing at the time of our application. They were using it for parking, but we were notified that it wasn't approved for parking. So we put tire stops in front of it, so it couldn't be used. This spring, I noticed that there were, some of the folks living there were parking their to the left of what I call the office building. So that they would, they would, they would be backing out directly onto Route twenty-eight, which I thought was very dangerous. So I contacted Mr. Hal Giotis and discussed with him allowing the use of the gravel area for parking for safety reasons until we had this meeting tonight. I thought we had an agreement. Apparently, I was supposed to wait until I had a confirmation from Paul. And I instructed my client, he could go ahead and start using it. But I hadn't heard back from Paul. And then I, I did hear back from Paul and he was quite upset that we had gone ahead and started using it. But he thought it was very clear that, you know, I should have waited to have a confirmation of our understanding. And it was, so that was my misunderstanding. And so to the extent, you know, that's offensive to anybody, I apologize for having that happen without, you know, having come to you with this more formal request. So those are, those are the two changes that we're seeking from the original order. The, the, part of the benefit of, of this hearing is the fact that we received notice from Chris Nickerson that the paving really hadn't been completed and was resulting in some drainage issues. Mr. Rudnick has addressed that immediately, so that we're no longer contributing a stormwater runoff onto the intersection of twenty-eight and Deep Hole Road. You know, the, the final paving will occur in the early fall. you know, I, the, I think that if you, if you've driven by, I, I tend to drive by frequently. One thing I can say, really without reservation, is that the project looks good. There's no trash around, there's no papers around, there's, you know, it's, it's a neat and orderly site, considering the fact that, you know, they could have as many as a hundred and eighty people living there. the, I, I did have some conversation with Mr. Sabat, who represents Kent Driscilla, who represents the abiding owners on the north side. Mr. Rudnick has done the planting that was required by your decision twice. Both times, once because of, you know, the water restriction and another time because they just couldn't get enough water up there to keep the plants alive. In my conversation with Mr. Sabat about that aspect of it, Mr. Driscilla was quite animated about wanting that planting done. Mr. Sabat and I had a conversation about, instead of doing a planting, which, as I say, has failed twice, would be happy to provide a six-foot stockade fence along that property line. So that would be another change that we'd be requesting, rather than doing the planting. I think that's, you know, we've had some conversations with Paul about the fact that we have some crushed stone walkways that are supposed to be concrete. Mr. Rudnick has signed contracts to have those walks redone as concrete walks. I think in terms of changes I think in terms of changes from the original application, I think those are the main changes. Although the, Paul had made a comment about it smelled an odor by the septic system. Septic system's a very sophisticated system. It requires semi-annual inspections by, you know, the company that installed it. And those inspections go to the Board of Health, and they've, every time they've done the inspection, they've said the system's working fine. So I think, you know, we have some building department issues with the office building. We've reached an agreement with Jack Me regarding the resolution of those. The, in your original order, all the buildings were to be sprinkled, and the, the, somehow, Mr. Rudnick never understood that the office building had to be sprinkled as well. So I went back and watched the meeting, and it was pretty clear. I think Joe McPartland made the, made the motion there, but it was pretty clear that all the buildings were to be sprinkled. And so Mr. Rudnick has signed a contract to have that done. It's going to be done in the fall. Our agreement with Jack is that if it wasn't done by the spring, that the building couldn't be inhabited. And so, as I say, we have a contract to have the building sprinkled. It'll be done in the fall. I think that in the main, we're in compliance with the order, with your decision. And, and we're going to, with a little relief from you on the patio and the parking, I think we'll be in full compliance, you know, by the fall this year.
Very good, Mary.
So, practical standpoint, it's just a matter that your, your as-built doesn't match our special permit.
Right.
Now, I thought we had granted you a parking waiver, but I don't see a parking waiver in the, when, when
We requested, we requested one, I know that.
I know, and I don't, I don't see it.
I'm pretty sure it was granted.
I, I thought, so two, that would have been my recollection, but I don't see it in here. I think from a practical standpoint, I guess I'd probably just want to go, go through the list. So the first thing that was
The list you're saying, just to be clear, this, you're talking about the planner's notes?
Correct, this, the staff report.
The June 14 staff report.
Correct.
We ought to go through that kind of step by step.
And I'm looking back towards, to the
2019.
Original special permit decision, which was dated in May of 2019.
May 14, 2019.
Yeah, so looking at the parking, the parking is different than what it was. So it looks like you have 21, 21 are actually built on, with gravel as opposed to paved.
No, the, I believe it's 21 on the asphalt, gravel was never approved for parking.
Okay, so.
We want to add the gravel, which is approximately 11 spaces, 11 or 12 spaces.
Okay, so the notes we have say that parking lot construction hadn't been completed, that a finished court, a finished course of pavement has not been installed. The town's highway manager indicated that the drainage system inlets are not functioning because the grading did not pitch towards the catch basins, which are causing the puddling at the corner of 28 and Deep Hole Road.
Right, and that, Mr. Rudnick has reported to me, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Nickerson yet.
Okay.
But he reported to me that he had paving done, so that the surface now pitches to the catch basins, and we're no longer contributing to that puddling. The final course of pavement has not been done.
Okay.
But that aspect has been corrected. So the final course will be done probably in the fall.
Okay.
Because right now, we have a lot of people living there, so.
Okay.
What was the head count again you gave?
Sorry?
What was the head count of total number of people living?
The design is 180 people.
It was, yeah, it was two per bedroom, right? If I recall correctly.
Yeah, two per bedroom, the, and the
How do you end up with 21 parking spaces for that?
Well, because we didn't think we were going to have any people parking there.
Right, because most of the J ones were using bikes.
Right.
We're using bikes.
Yeah, that was, that was what we discussed.
So
We had a quick indication that the final paving would be done in the fall.
Yes.
Why is there a wait?
Well, we have people living there now.
Well, the paving's done all the time. It just rerouted, I'm assuming, because this will be occupied until November or October. I don't understand how waiting will solve that problem.
The, because the note we got from Mr. Nickerson had to do primarily, his concern was primarily with drainage. So we've corrected the drainage issue. So we'd like to wait until the fall to complete the paving. I mean, I mean, really, for the board, that's our request.
Okay, just, all right, thank you.
And then, and then the second part is that there was going to be an additional gravel surface for 10 vehicles on the northeast end of the property, which would be up on the Old Colony.
Right.
So just my comments on, on the parking, I guess, I guess I would just look for some confirmation from DPW that they're, that they would be, that they're okay with the way the drainage is, and that, and that they're okay with the paving, that the final paving course not, not happen until the fall. I mean, I, I wouldn't be agreeable with that unless staff agreed with that.
Okay, well, and I understand that, and Mr. Nickerson has been very easy to communicate with. I'll be in touch with him this week and try to get a response for you.
I'm assuming if your proposal is gravel on the, on this, the lot with the additional 10 spaces, that there, there wouldn't be any accessible spaces there, they're all in the other, they would all be on the paved.
And again, it's a practical matter.
Understood.
So is this, this northeast section, is this currently where people are parking, kind of an ad hoc manner?
Yes, well, no, in the, in the gravel area, yes.
Because it sounds like from the letters that we had, that there was, you know, substantially more, this is why I was getting to that question, we're getting, you know, 30% more people parking, 30% more cars parking, I should say, more vehicles in the lot. So that would certainly take up some of the slack there, but, so it's just, that's just the way people are doing it. Because I know that there was, when I'd been out there, there was parking on the sides of the road, both of the roads to the, I think it's east of Old Colony, I can't remember the name of that access road to the back. But, Old County, correct?
Yeah, Old Colony.
Old Colony.
It's on the back side, but
No, but on the east side toward, you know, it's, it's not really a driveway, but it's kind of the triangulate. It's the hypotenuse that shoots back to Old Colony.
Deep Hole.
Deep Hole, yeah, Deep Hole up.
Right. So, because I know people definitely, that was being used for parking all along there multiple times, because I go by there all the time myself, so.
Right, but I think, well, I really haven't, I haven't been there at a time, I suppose it would be in the evening, when most of the people
Right.
are there, I have not done that yet. But I believe that the gravel parking is going to alleviate that to a rate, hopefully, 100%. But that's the, you know, that's, and that's why we allowed them, we thought we had permission, but, to park there. Because I was more concerned about the safety, people backing out to Route 28 from the lawn area.
So we still have walkways there, right?
Yep, so walkways.
Well, and just a final comment on parking. Mr. Rudnick anticipates that after this year, we'll be back to a majority of the people using the property will be J ones. You know, our, the, the, so the, the business model is that we don't rent to the workers themselves, we rent to their employers. So, you know, Wacasset Inn, Chana Bars Inn, Mom and Pops, and, you know, Perks, and Chatham Village. So we have all these different employers.
You're expecting more of those employers than the Zooties of the world?
Right.
Who would have the H two Bs more.
Right, so they think, well, they think by next year, we'll be back to the J one as a majority of the, of the workers.
So with respect to the walkways, the walkways are, are built. And when did you say that the cement?
I did, I did not get a timeframe, I'll send a supplemental.
My concern with that would only be if, for the accessibility standpoint.
Right, and the, what Mr. Rudnick reported to me was, he signed the contract to have the work done. And he indicated it would be done soon. I don't have a time on it yet, but I will send, you know, a note to you, letting you know what, what the contract date is.
With the, did anything change with the lighting, or is it, because we have a comment here that it says the applicant's architect should provide the planning board with certification that they've installed the building parking lot and landscape lighting that was included in the site plan. Is anything with the lighting changing from what was approved originally? So it would be the same, so the lighting would show up on the, on a final as-built?
Right, the, and we, and we have an architect who's, you know, prepared to go out and certify it.
The landscaping issues, was the only landscaping issue going to be, was the landscaping issue agreed to be resolved with the fence?
Well, Mr. Sabat represents the neighbor, he and I had a conversation about that. And in my conversation with Mr. Rudnick, we would rather do a stockade fence. I would say that's up to the board, the, rather than the planting. He's done the planting twice, it's died twice, he'd just soon not do it again. So we'd rather do a stockade fence, which once up will be the solution. But that's, that's really a question for you.
Have you had an opportunity, if I could, have you had an opportunity to talk to your, your clients yet? Or when would you think you'd be able to?
I haven't really, about that little detail. What we talked about was, I, I requested on their behalf that there be, that they complete the planting that they were supposed to do, and add a stockade fence, because both of those things will give solid insulation, because remember, they're moving these parking spaces into the area that previously was to be vegetated, and therefore provide insulation for the residences northeasterly. So that's why we asked for both, the screening that was required and a stockade fence. And they've come back and they've indicated that, and we appreciate the fact that they're willing to do a stockade fence, but they've said rather than, or in lieu of the, of the vegetation and the screening materials. So we would like both, because I think, given the fact that, and I can wait until I, until you call for the public.
Sure.
I don't want to
No, I just, while we were on the subject, I just wanted to ask.
I've made a simple clarification now, and I'll, I'll enhance it a little bit.
Okay, wanted both.
Give you a chance.
Thank you. Fact is, you have one big patio and not four small ones. Based on discussions from the, with the, with the, a former building inspector, three passed, so.
Yeah, we do have revolving doors somewhere in Town Hall, so it's very unfortunate.
We received a comment about the gazebo, that it was placed directly on the ground without a slab or blocks, and that it should be on sonar tubes, which to me is a comment for the building inspector and not really our, our issue.
The, what happened was, we put it down, it ended up actually being in the, in the right of way for Route 28.
Fabulous.
Because we thought, well, it's perfect for a bus stop. And then Jack Me raised the issue, and so, moving quickly, they got it out of there, but so I think the goal right now is, is to use blocks
Okay.
to get it off the ground.
Okay, that's the gazebo.
Right. Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that, I thought I recalled in previous meetings that we had that there was discussion about the gazebo needing to be wheelchair accessible, especially if it was going to be used as a shelter for bus stop. Any recollection?
I do not recall that. I don't know. Because it's, you know, it's not adjacent to the asphalt. It was never, it was never planned to be adjacent to the asphalt, it was always planned to be over
Right, but where it is now, where it is now, where you moved it to, I think there's a couple steps up from the asphalt. And I thought I recalled conversations about that being, needing to be ADA compliant.
I do not recall that. I can
I could, I would suggest that we can have the building inspector comment on that before we, we can make a decision, right? The dumpster, I know there's something about the dumpster.
Before we go on, Alan, sorry.
I just, there's something that, like, we're going through this laundry list of
Yep.
Why are they different? Why do they, one's 2019, one's 2023? They're very different.
Well, the 2023 is supposed to be the as-built. The 2019
Apparently, there's one patio, right?
A big part
Apparently, there's one patio?
Yes.
Like, the plan, the plan had four?
Correct.
The original one had four.
The original one had four.
The original one had four, and if you look at the 2023
And this is the checklist of deviations, these are all the items on that deviation.
Right.
And the deviation was due to, you know, COVID, labor, supply, you know, supply cost.
Conversations with staff that suggested changes that should have come back before us instead of just making
Slipped their mind.
Yes. So
And we were skating around on Zoom.
Mr. Peterson, it didn't slip their mind, it never entered their mind. Ray Chesley said, oh, you ought to do this instead of that, okay.
So, so the one that's marked the as-built is the 2023 plan.
That's correct.
With, it shows the one patio.
Just a clarification on that, though. So this as-built that we're looking at now is really not the as-built because of the changes you just described that I don't see on here, is a question.
No, the only, the only thing that's not shown on the as-built is our proposed parking on the gravel, I believe, I mean, that's He just, they, they don't show his, his park, they just show a gravel surface, edge of existing paving. The, in terms of the dumpster, the, what Mr. Rudnick reported to me was that initially there were going to be two dumpsters that would be smaller in size. One was going to be between the two buildings over on Old County Road, and the other would be over on the, in, in the parking area. But when they went to place it, if you look on the as-built plan, there's a handhold, there's electric meters, there's a transformer, and there's a hydrant. And so, the, no room to put the dumpster and still have the trucks service it and get in there. So that was, you know, basically, instead of, instead of having just one, one, they sort of made one large one, which they put over in the parking area.
So do we have a, do you have a relocation consideration? Because I think that was one of the things that when you walked down there, let's say steep access, and this is certainly indicated here at the report. Is there a, all backup Plan B here? It's going to be.
For the, for the dumpster?
The dumpster, yeah, because the, the report here says it's, it's going to make it handicapped, is impossible. Handicapped access and for, you know, probably during any inclement weather. And when my two visits with the former planner and the inspector, it's like, this is, you know, difficult. Were you on that one? Did you go along?
No, I wasn't.
You've been there?
So I guess my question is, who uses the dumpster? Is it everybody? Does everybody throw their, if everybody throws their trash in it, then that, that may be an issue. Again, I would tend to think that that is something that the building inspector could comment on.
And I think, I mean, the only thing I could think of would be that they would use a much smaller, like a portable container that they would put close to the handicapped access of the buildings. And then, you know, the employees would have to.
Yeah.
Move it down and.
Right.
Get it to the dumpster.
So the building issue was the sprink, was the fact that the original Stone Horse Building wasn't sprinklered and needs to be. So, so that's another building department issue.
Yeah, we, and we have a contract to have it sprinkled. In our agreement, Mr. Jack Me gave us a temporary certificate of occupancy for the building on the condition that the sprinkling be completed prior to next, actually April 1st, but we have a contract for it to be done in October.
So wastewater, again, is an issue that, that's a border health issue, so that's easy enough. You said you have regular inspections?
They do, they do it semi-annually.
Okay. And we can certainly.
Those, those inspection reports are delivered, they're supposed to be delivered to the Board of Health. I haven't checked.
That's easy enough for us to ask the building about border health.
I was delighted to see that the word motel was painted out last week.
On the sign?
On the sign. That was taken care of.
The Stone Horse.
Yeah, we did, we did get off the word motel, so.
And yeah, obviously, the last, one of the last comments was that, you know, any changes were subject to planning board review, which we obviously know hadn't happened, which is why we're here tonight.
Right.
So, I think if, I mean, from my perspective, it seems like we just need some follow-up with some town departments.
Right.
And on the walkways, and then we can, if our next, Shiloh was our next meeting, is that the August 8th or is it, no, what's our?
The next meeting is July 11th, and we're very thin that meeting, so we could absorb, there, there are no new cases on for that.
Okay.
So what, Mary, what was your take on the business of requesting a schedule and a performance bond?
So I would, I mean, it depends on when they're going to have items done, you know, for, for paving, all of those things are questions for the building, for building and for like DPW, if a lot of them are, if it's paving. You know, we can certainly ask Mr. Nickerson to, to tell us what he thinks and, and what he thinks the cost is and what the cost would be if we had to go in and pave it. And then, you know, we could certainly request that if we thought we needed it.
Good.
You know, if, if it's going to get done, it's, you know, another story, so. Those are all questions for staff to answer.
Right.
And give us guidance.
Well, I just think that, you know, the sense of, when you read the public material and the record, I think there's a sense of urgency that, you know, we should be responsive to, so.
So from, those are, those are my questions. I just wanted to go through that. I mean, you are right, we asked someone in public hearing if there are other.
Alan, did you have any other ideas?
I'm good.
Craig? Anybody else from here? Should we go to public? Great. Mr. Sabat?
Thank you very much for the record, Charles Sabat, again, representing Oliver Homes LLC. So let me go first to the question of the fence and screening issue that was raised earlier. So just very briefly, one thing to clarify, in terms of the number of parking spaces, as I read the original decision, in the narrative section of that, which you find online, it talks about a total of 17 parking spaces, six paved and 11 on the grass. And it's a small difference, but there are 21 apparently there now. And so I didn't have a chance to ask Bill this afternoon when he called me back, but I think, I guess the, the question is, are they going from 21 to 31 or 17 to 27? Because they're asking for 10 additional spaces, so that's a question. But what's more important about that is that originally the spaces were going to be along the side of the, the most northerly building, but yet insulated by the, the vacant area of the site. My client is northeasterly of this site, and there, I think there's some other residences up there as well. So the, the original plan was, as approved here, was to, because of that, that open area or that non-developed area, you'd have insulation for those residences from those parking spaces. Now you're going to put parking spaces in that area, which is going to result in increased noise. And remember, some of these people, whether they're on bicycles or not, some of these people, many of them are coming back at 1:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the morning. These places are closing late at night. And, you know, if they're doing, if they're there doing their side work, whatever it may be, they're going to be coming back later, and that's a potential for noise. And that's been the experience, I'm told, in that area. So what we asked for from the applicant, again, was in addition to the screening that was required, the vegetation screening, to also put a fence there because that would, that really is how you can seriously insulate against noise, is you have a combination of trees and bushes and a, and a solid fence. And, you know, you really gave them, I, I think, extraordinary relief. I'm not criticizing. You gave them extraordinary relief for this, this development, which is very appropriate. We, we need the housing for these people, so we don't oppose that concept at all. But I think, given the fact that they were given some very exceptional relief here, they should bear the burden of, of, of ensuring against or doing everything they can to ensure against noise in that northerly area, particularly where they're moving the spaces into that area that previously you cited in, among your findings, was going to serve as, as, as insulation against that, that sort of thing. The other issue is on the patios. It, it may seem minor that it went from four diverse patios to one central patio, but the idea behind the four patios was that if there were gatherings, especially again, late at night, early in the morning, that they would be dispersed around, and three of them were very southerly from, again, where these residential areas are. There was only one that was going to be sort of in that northerly area. And now you've gone from four to one large patio. And, and Mrs. Ruchellet, who, who works for Oliver Homes, for the Oliver family, tells me that there have been, there were gatherings there, large gatherings during the summer, which is expected. You've got 180 people living there in a dormitory type setting. And so by dispersing them around, you, you can disperse the noise. You know, this is one of the reasons that the people up in Brighton opposed Boston College expanding their dormitories under the old, it was a section that they, that Boston College purchased. They were very much against it, including the Secretary of State who lived there on that street next to those dormitories. But that's what you get when you have a dormitory type of setting. The third item that we, that we wanted to, to add is the entrance onto Old Colony Road. In your original determination, Old Colony Road, I'm sorry, Old County Road, thank you, Old County Road, you originally indicated in, this was in finding of fact 10, the proposed driveway from Route 28 to Old County Road will allow for fire access on all sides of the buildings. And, and I stress that because your finding wasn't based on access, convenient access for the residents. It was really based on access for fire equipment and emergency vehicles. So the, the issue that we're, that, that, that we are having with, with the Old Colony Road, and it has some impact on, on our client, but certainly on, on all of the residences on that, on Old County Road, on, on that area, is that, again, people are coming in at all hours of the night from their workplaces, and they're traveling through this, these residential area through that entrance. And we submit that that's not really necessary to have that particular entrance. And you could solve the problem of having the access by making it a lock gate, where the fire department would have a, a key to a lock gate, would allow them to get access from that side. And you're not really sacrificing anything in terms of the accessibility by the residents because if they go out on Old County Road from that entrance, they turn left, the only option for them is to get back out to Route 28. If they turn right, I understand they go up the road, then there's a stop sign, they take a right, and where do they go? Route 28. So all roads lead to Route 28 eventually anyway. So even though it may seem somewhat extreme to ask to close that down, what we're really asking for is to close it down for vehicular access, again, to help to reduce the noise and impact, and make it a lock gate for the fire department, so they will have access for those types of vehicles. So those are our three major issues. And again, the fence plus screening in the north is, is important to us, and we would ask you to consider that in.
Thank you. Before you go, do we have any questions about this, these concerns? Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who wish to address the board? Thank you very much. Step right up, as the circus guy says, right?
Good evening. My name is Mary Kane. I live at 34 Old County Road, directly across the street from the dormitories. And I could not concur more with this gentleman. It's great to drive by in the daytime. A lot of people who are living there work day and night. Our concern is those that are returning back to the dormitories at night. They usually, in the summertime, it's very hot, sometimes they have old cars, they roll the windows down, the noise from the radios is blasting. Now, I remember when I was a kid, I did that all the time. But when you're living, when it's 2:00 in the morning and you're 73 and you're trying to get some sleep, it's really very, very noticeable. That is a critical point. There must be, oh, at least, at least 10 cars or eight to 10 cars that arrive in the early morning hours. The, this, the, the part about locking access to Old County Road would make our neighborhood essentially so much safer. It's a very, very tiny road, if you've ever driven down it, and all kinds of people walk there. People walk their dogs, they walk their kids. And when there's, when there's double, now there's double the traffic just coming from the Stone Horse, not to mention the wonderful tourists that we get that use it as a cut-through. And it's almost impossible to walk the neighborhood anymore without taking your life in your hands. There's a tremendous, you're always looking over your shoulder to see what's coming. And it's, it's, it's changed the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is, was an open, friendly neighborhood. You stop and say hi to your neighbors, you pet their dogs, you know, there was a lot of communal kind of things like that. I rarely see people on that road anymore. It's very dangerous. And the other point about the encroachment closer to the neighborhood on where they want to park their cars, they have a beautiful point on the other side, which is lawn area, but there's more than enough room if they want to add parking on, down there, which would tie into the commercial end of Old County Road, right down where the Bayberry complex is, and there's several others' complexes. But they keep encroaching on the residential area. I'm looking out my front door and I see those 10 cars right across the street, more than just maybe 50 feet across the street. And the noise just from those 10 cars, added to the ones that are abutting them across that little driveway, is just noise constantly in the, in the early hours. And last summer, the summer before, there were so many after-work parties. And the, I would look out, there was one night where somebody at one of these workplaces must have invited all their friends and buddies. There must have been 50 people, cars all parked on both sides of Old County Road. And what they did was they would roll the windows down and they, in their car, and they would crank up one of the cars so loud. And it was just, it was just absolutely impossible. And the person who was supposed to be there, the night manager, did nothing to come out and stop the noise, absolutely nothing. And so this goes on, this went on all summer long. I called the realty company several times, I complained to them, I probably should have come here earlier. But this is the point, when you see this on the agenda, that the quality of life for those of us who live in that neighborhood has gone down substantially because of some of the challenges that we face. And if you could put, closing off the access to Old County Road, it would enormously improve the neighborhood. And I agree, you could have a, a, a fence, you could have a lock that the, you know, the police and the fire could have. And there are two accesses onto 28 on the property. So they don't have to back up. They could have gone up the little hill and over the rise and gone right out straight to Route 28. And my feeling is, is that if you use those, then there really shouldn't be any reason to access our little street. And maybe, again, we could go out and have a more communal feeling in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from public wish to address the board?
Scott McKenzie, and I live at 114 Deep Hole Road. I am right across the street from the gazebo. And at nighttime, I can tell you, between 1:00 and 3:00 in the morning, they might as well be in our bedroom. They're that loud. And they do indeed put their radios on in their cars. They have a bass in their trunk, they open it up and boom, boom, boom. And, you know, fortunately this year, a lot of that, the music after 10:00 has slowed down, but not completely, because they're still pulling into their, with their windows down and the bass going, boom, boom, boom. So we have talked to the owner and he's been very pleasant. And these kids do need to do what little kids or young adults need to do. There's no two ways about it. But on our side, they all are hanging in the gazebo. The patio that they have over there has no furniture over there. There's two grills. They're not going to stand on a concrete slab in between two buildings, which would help. There really ought to be a gazebo type structure over there, and it should be wrapped in concrete walls with two, I mean, honest to God. And, you know, this whole notion about putting. And, you know, this whole notion about putting a wooden fence on the other side of the parking lot, it's going to do this much. You know, I've got beautiful trees. You might as well, it's like trying to cure cancer with holy water. It's just not going to do anything for you. And so the party should be taken to an area where it's enclosed, and it's lit, maybe there's a camera there so that they can keep track of the ongoings. But there should be nobody in the gazebo when they're not waiting for a bus. There's no reason for it whatsoever at 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00 in the morning. And they're bringing people to there from bars, you know, and they get those fart pipe, you know, exhaust systems, and they're pulling out, revving their engines, and peeling off down the road at 3:00 in the morning. We work, you know, we're not retired. I've got to get up in the morning. My wife works. She commutes twice a week up to Framingham and has to leave at 6:00 in the morning. It can't go on until 3:00 in the morning. It can't. It's just not practical, it's not fair.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Yes.
I just want to make a comment to those of you that are having noise issues. You absolutely should be calling the police department at 1:00 in the morning, because we have, we're trying to hold the restaurants, the Board of Slockman is certainly trying to hold the restaurants responsible in Harwichport for noise issues. And the same is true, that is amplified noise. We have a noise ordinance. If you're talking 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, you absolutely should be calling the police department. They enforce our, they enforce our noise by law and our noise regulations in Harwich. So I understand calling, I understand the owner, and hopefully the owner will, with his employees, do more to help that issue. But from my perspective, if I were you across the street, I would be calling, I would be calling the police department as much as I wouldn't want to cause the big stink. I have to get up in the morning too, so I completely understand where you're coming from. But they are the ones enforcing. So if you're hearing it across the street, I would guess that it's more than 150 feet away, and you should be calling the police department. That's, that's what those overnight officers are certainly prepared to come and do, just like they do in Harwichport.
In West Harwich.
When people are having issues. So I just didn't want to leave that unsaid.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you for that, for that comment, because it offers me the opportunity to tell you that I must have called the police department over 25 times. Now, what the problem is, is that in this day and age of technology, you can put on your phone a police scanner free. It's an app, they've got millions of them. And when you put in your zip code, if you call the police in that city, it dings your phone. And I've done it, I've called the police, as I said, dozens of times, only to see, five minutes after I called, the entire party dispersing like lemons. And I'm standing in the middle of Old County Road in my night gown and robe, waiting for the police to come. And they come, and there's nobody there. Nobody. And this has happened over and over and over again. So it's a real serious issue that calling the police, and by the time that the call goes in, the partiers are also getting notified, and they disperse. And that has been the issue. And I have spoken to police officers, and I've spoken, you know, numerous times, and told them to just drive by randomly, especially on the weekends. And it really hasn't stopped it. And so I thank you.
The flip side is, that call early, call often, right? You know, if that's working, but anyway. I'm not disagreeing, because, believe me, we've had our thing in West Harwich too, where we had establishments, you know, closing at 1:00 in the morning, and peel-outs, you know, two. And people with a half-mile radius complaining. So dozens of people in this very room. So I shouldn't have been facetious, but. Anyway, I've got one of those apps on my phone, because I know it works, you're exactly right. I mean, that's what I was trying to get at, so. Alan.
Mr. Riley, is there an onsite manager there?
There is. The...
Thank you.
Discussing this with Mr. Rudnick. He said that, you know, the rule is that after 10:00, noise has to shut down. I said, well, how do you enforce that? Well, he said, the onsite guy goes out and asks people to be quiet. If they continue to make noise, he's instructed to go in and call the police. He's not an enforcer. He goes out, says, please stop making the noise if they continue. Another thing that I discussed with Mr. Rudnick is that, none of the people who live there actually have a contract to live there. The contract is with their employer. And what Mr. Rudnick has reported to me is that if there's, if they can identify the people making the noise, they contact the employer and say, tell your employees, if they continue making noise, they'll be kicked out. They have a right under the contract to ask them to leave. They have no tenancy rights at all. And the, and the employers, if that happens, the employers have lost their employee. And so according to Mr. Rudnick, it's been effective in terms of enforcing that. Now, you know, I don't, I sympathize with the neighbors. I think that it's really unconscionable if they're making loud noise late at night. I understand that, you know, getting out of work at 1:00 in the morning and sort of winding down. But the, with regard to locking, putting a locking gate up, what I would ask is that I would consult with the police and fire, see what their response is, and then, you know.
Fair enough.
You know, if they, if they have no objection, then we would agree to, we would agree to put it up. I mean, although with all due respect to Mr. Sabat, some people who turn right on Old County Road go up to Long, go up to Old Chatham Road and go left, because they're going up to our center. Anyway, but, I mean, I think the analysis is correct. There's a large driveway that runs in front of the old office building, and it has a very wide connection with the parking area. With regard to the fence versus planting, I think it was Mr. McKenzie who said, you know, putting trees up doesn't do anything for noise. In reality, you need a solid structure. Having a solid structure with the trees on the inside isn't going to do anything for noise. The, so what we would prefer is just, you know, put up a six-foot stockade fence and, you know, the, I don't know, you know, enforcing these rules against, you know, they're really basically young adults, I guess, is difficult. And, you know, Mr. Rudnick has suggested that he could hire, he could hire a security company that would work from 10:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. to help control the noise. And the, and if, I would ask the neighbors to let us know, and if we're unable to control the noise otherwise, that we would hire the security system, the security people, to be, you know, to have a couple of guys with fancy uniforms walking around enforcing the, you know, the noise issue. So, but we'd like to try our own, you know, significant expense. So we'd like to see if we can avoid that with persuasion through employers and working directly with the people who live there first.
Right.
And if that doesn't work, if the neighbors would, you know, call Mr. Rudnick, in addition to calling the police, to let us know if it's not being effective, then we'll take that next step.
Great. Did we have any, anybody else from the public? Yes, please. In the meantime, did you have a point? Okay. Just wanted to clear the decks here.
We're a gimpie tonight, so hopefully you...
Take your time. Thank you for coming out.
I'm delighted to be here. I'm Bob Wojnarowski.
Thank you for your email.
And I reside on Deep Hole Road. I'm actually Scott McKenzie's neighbor. And living in that neighborhood now for 20-some-odd years, we're extremely proud. It's a great town, wonderful people. And unfortunately, the last couple of, three summers has been a blemish on that, the quality of life issue. As we're talking about the noise issues tonight, it's not predicated on, oh, it's just happening. It's been ongoing and ongoing. And how many calls has my wife made to Mr. Rudnick, or the gentleman's name? Nothing happens. We don't call the police, because we're trying not to blemish further and bring the law on to these people. Yeah, they've got to work, but they're also despoiling our neighborhoods. The noise, the tragic event that happened there a few months ago that we all know about, with the young lady having to take care of business. I say that one of the comments tonight was very enlightening from the point of view that the anticipation is, next year, a lot of the occupants are going to be back to the J1 status. So is all the discussion now about all the enhanced parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, redundant from the point of view that you're not going to have the vehicles there? Yes, I sat in some of the original meetings, and I was, quite frankly, quite opposed to those dormitories being built. But they have been built. But now we're living with the consequences of those actions. And I also remember, in those early meetings, it was discussed, oh, we'll have maybe eight cars there, but everybody's going to be using bicycles, or they're going to be transported by a bus. Okay, that made some sense. But now, when I come out of Deep Hole Road onto 28, and I see all these vehicles lined up, and it actually becomes a contest. Do they let me out onto 28? Or are they going to go zipping out, you know, and some hell-bent-for-fire going over, who knows what? So I'm just saying, if it is a consideration that this is going to revert down the road back to a J1 status, why don't we just put aside all of this stuff, at least about the parking, and not invite or make the platform, as it were, for more cars, more vehicles, more problems attended with that aspect of this? So that's what I wanted to say. I hope my words are well received. They're meant to be very friendly, because, again, I feel we are among friends here. So with that, I'll pass along. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Mr. Riley, with all due respect, you said that in the answer to Alan's question, there's a night manager there and explained the process that Mr. Rudnick has explained to you to handle noise complaints after 10:00. But based on the testimony that we've heard and the numbers that have been thrown around, it almost appears to me that if, in fact, that is the case, there's a full-time employee there, a nighttime manager all night or until 3:00 a.m., it isn't working now. So to say, you know, let's give it a shot, I think probably the shot has been for the last two years. I'm not advocating that you go right out and hire a security guard. And as Mary pointed out, noise regulations are not our bailiwick. But it's evident to me that the current process for handling it simply doesn't work.
I'm not certain, it wasn't clear to me, and the folks behind me can enlighten me, was whether they were talking about the past years or this year.
I don't mean to lock on the gentleman here, but I would like to make a point order.
Then please address the microphone, because this is...
It's still public.
Yeah, sorry. We're still, this is a public. Yeah, sorry about that.
Not to worry, I guess I needed the exercise. Yeah, again, I emphasize or reemphasize the point that this isn't just a new problem, but that from day one, we've been having to call and call and call and call. And it does bear added emphasis on the fact that, yes, there is a site manager there. I believe he has young children.
Right, he does.
And so how can he bear or tolerate the fact that this noise, that's so demonstrative, okay? With his little kids probably being awakened in the night, that he should, or some action should be taken. But we also bring to the attention of Mr. Rudnick that the gentleman, I don't mean to impugn him, but he's impotent in that regard of what he's supposed to be policing, or maybe that's the wrong word. If he's supposed to pick up the phone and call the police, he's certainly remiss in making that happen. So all we're trying to do here is, again, in that sense of communal spirit, connect the dots so that we can get a working solution that our quality of life collectively, for the folks who are living there and trying to earn a living or doing whatever they're doing, and those of us who are living around the clock, day in and day out, year-round, that we can have a nice quality of life as well.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the board this evening?
But just one, one comment overall. I think the term was used that this project has gotten extraordinary relief along the way. And my point of view is, there's so little that has changed from the other times we've discussed this project till tonight. Okay, so that we're still giving this extraordinary relief. And if we stick to the facts, which is what we should do in judging this case, the landscaping isn't done, we're still talking about walkways, we're still talking about driveway. And I think that the staff report was very eloquent in saying what we should do as a board to address these problems, to get down to some schedules and some when things will actually get done. So it's, and then one final point. This idea that we're going to have J1s next year is not a fact. It's maybe a hope.
Hypothesis, right?
It's a hypothesis. So it's, we have to deal with the facts of the case that have been in front of us multiple times. And just, my comment is, very little has changed. So I think we need to take the recommendation, very, very well-written staff report, and create some action around it.
Thank you. Yep, all right.
So I guess I don't think that very little has changed. I mean, Mr. Riley did come to us with, with some updates, which...
But there are hope to, going to, in the future.
But we still, nothing can happen unless, really, until we vote to change a site plan, or we make them go back and make all the changes. And the recommendation was, the recommendation I read was to continue the public hearing until they can come back with some of the changes.
Schedules, yes.
Right. And also for us to make some request of staff as well.
Yes.
Because, so, I mean, I don't think nothing has happened. But I also have, I also have to say, he's not wrong, that we've had a ton of staff changes since 2019.
True, but we talk a lot about excuses. Somebody gave them permission, and then it did get written down and whatever else. And it just seems like it keeps happening. So in terms of listening to the public, what's happening with noise and whatever else, it's time for us to get concrete about this project.
I just don't, I personally don't think we're ready for, to make a decision on a... an application tonight.
I, we have, we should continue it with some requests for specific actions.
So, that's what I thought, that's what I thought I did when I went through the staff report.
Right.
So maybe you disagree with, with what I, with what I had gone through, but I thought that's what we did do.
I don't disagree with it. I'm asking that we get a little bit more pointed and then deliberate to get to the facts of the case rather than why things haven't happened.
So, are we going to continue tonight? Are we continuing tonight, or are we going to have a, perhaps we have a resolution or something like that with a request for a checklist, or, I don't know, how would you like to resolve this?
I don't see how you can decide it tonight.
Right. No, but I'm saying, do we...
But what are we asking for?
Right, what are we asking for? Can we...
So, do, so, okay, I'll, I'll sit back, because I thought I asked for those updates on the staff report, going through the staff report and not talking to Mr. Riley about every item. So, I thought I did that, so...
No, you did that, but has that been formalized as a checklist or like an action list? Is that what you're asking? Because that's kind of, like, to me, that was an informal kind of flow chart, but can we summarize?
It's not as informal as you folks did, so I'll step back.
No, no, that's not a criticism. I just...
No, but, but I thought that's what we just did.
I think it is what we did. I think it's time to recap, though, don't you? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I did. Give you a schedule, and by this time, we need to...
So, we talked about the next meeting.
Right.
We talked about that we, we were going to reach out to the...
Building Department.
Building Department has to comment on some stuff, because some of this, you know, as eloquent as this may or may not have been, a lot of it doesn't relate to us. It's not, it's building, it's building inspector-related that has nothing to do with us.
Right.
Action, action, action.
Right.
Schedule, when...
Please.
Sheila.
We're going to be looking to Chris Nickerson about the opinion of cost, Jack Mee about the gazebo and the sprinkling, Carrie Sherner from Health Department with the reports on
the septic, and are, is she getting them, and the police and fire about the logging tape.
Perfect.
And when the, when the, um, when the actual paving or cementing of the walkways was going to, was going to get done...
Schedules, contracts, costs.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Chris Nickerson, on what, on, on what his recommendation would be on a, whether a performance bond was necessary on paving a parking lot.
So, no.
So I think that's, that's, that's the summary that I was...
That's the summary.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Sheila.
May I ask one question?
Yes, of course.
Like the patio, so I know we discussed that there was discussion that happened that shifted it from four to, to one. It, could we, could we as a board say, we're not okay with that, and shift it back to four? Like, how does, how do those people...
It's a good question. Mary, do we have a POV?
We can. As-built, but things happen in as-built all the time where things get changed. From my perspective, on the patio, I understand, you know, the four to the one, I, I do see that they probably wrongly relied on a building inspector telling them that they thought it looked better, and perhaps they should have known better. They didn't talk to council. Our clients don't always listen to us, and they don't always come to us. But, yes, we, we could do that. In this instance, I'm probably less inclined to, to ask them to go from one patio to four patios, but, um, that's my opinion. Um, you know, I'm, we, we can, but typically the more, typically the thing that ends up happening is, they come to us and they say, hey, the, you know, it's usually, it's usually less non-conforming than this. I don't disagree with that, but usually there are changes, and they come to you and say, hey, you know, we, we built this 10 feet over as opposed to where it is, and you're not in the habit of making the move, you know, a building 10 feet over at the end of the day, when, when sometimes those things happen for any number of reasons, like the dumpster getting changed because there's electrical panels there and it wasn't accessible. So, it happens.
With regard to the patios, I mean, this is just, what I think, has nothing to do with reality necessarily. It seems to me that, that what you're doing is spreading the noise out. If you start, so in other words, you have a big patio, so where are you going to put the new patio? Well, they're going to have to go down towards Route 28. And right now, there's a building between the patio and Route 28 and the neighbors. So the, the further you move the patios, there's, there's nothing in front of the patio, so I'd be more concerned about noise that way. I mean, I, so, you know, it's a, it's a decision for you to make, but that, that was my thought process, right?
The patio is between the old motel building and the north building.
Right.
As opposed to the four patios were kind of at the east and west...
There were pads.
On the Route 28 side, there were pads on the east and west ends between the dormitory buildings and 28, is what I see, on the original, on the original proposal.
I mean, it, I mean, whatever, yeah, it's whatever the, whatever the board wants. I mean, the, it's the same thing with, with the plantings. I mean, the, uh, so, Mr. Rudnick reports to me that he's done the plantings twice, and they failed both times. And so, if, if, you know, you want the plantings again, we'll do the plantings again. I thought that, uh, having a six-foot stockade fence was much more effective from the northerly neighbor's point of view relative to noise than just having plantings. And, you know, and that fence won't, you know, you don't have to water the fence. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what to say. I was just saying that it seemed to me the fence made a lot of sense, and he's willing to do it.
Right. Dave?
Uh, the problem isn't whether we have four patios, one patio, or no patios at all. It's how it's being used and when it's being used. Until you solve that problem, it doesn't matter how many patios you got. And a six-foot stockade fence is probably not going to mitigate the noise very much. That's why you don't see six-foot stockade fences along I-95 to protect the residents on the other side of that fence. They're 15 feet high, and it takes that much in order to really abate that kind of noise. So, we could talk about this till the cows come home, but it's not going to make any difference because of the way, the actions that are taken by the residents.
Well, I think the, the, uh, what, uh, my thought process, which is not my client, so I can't bind him to this, but my suggestion to him would be, instead of waiting to hire the security service, hire the security service now, and let's set the tone for the summer right, right now, in the hopes that, you know, by, by setting the tone now, we end the noise problem.
Getting a lot of shaking of heads back there in agreement.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a recommendation I'll make to my client.
Great.
And I'd be able to report back to you when I return on the 11th.
Very good. Well, I think, considering the hour, and we still have business this evening on the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion if we could, at this point. Next meeting is 11th?
July 11th, and it's a fairly good open meeting.
Great.
And we think we can get, you can talk to your client by then, and...
Well, I'll, I'll be on the floor tomorrow morning.
We've got the checklist. All right, great.
Okay, so I move that we continue the public hearing on...
What?
PB 2023-20 Main Street Stone Horse LLC.
Page 72.
Agent, attorney William Riley, um, to July 11th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Good to see you.
I'm going to move my cotton here.
So, last item of the agenda for the public hearings is PB 2023-21 Rick Roy Properties LLC, its worth agent David Clark, PE of Clark Engineering, is seeking a site plan special permit in order to build a new steel and concrete structure for construction storage. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-55, in Article 5, Use Regulations in accordance with Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property located at 123 Queen Anne, Accessors Map 57, Parcels G3 to 15 and G5-1. Property is located in the industrial low-density IL zoning district. Gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for your patience. Nice to see you, Mr. DeShal.
When I was here the last time, they...
I thought we were going to hear from you.
The Mile Street one literally drained my hearing aids, and I'm bringing them tonight because I, I saw they were on the agenda. Anyways, David Clark, for the record, Clark Engineering, Rick Roy, Rick Roy Construction, Rick Roy Properties, and Bill Crowe is here to assist us also.
We had to wake him up.
So, uh, what we're here for tonight for is special permit, site plan approval for, to construct a, a, an additional structure on this property at 123 Queen Anne Road. It's a storage building, basically steel and concrete, 3,600 square feet. It is being placed on the existent gra, the existing gravel storage area at the rear of the property. It meets all the setback requirements to the property lines. There's really no changes to site coverage other than materials. We're going from a semi-pervious gravel to a hard roof structure. For that reason, it provided additional drainage for, to collect the roof runoff and dispose of it subsurface. Um, that's pretty much it. Provided drainage calculations. Um, there were some trees that were acquired in the initial application 20 years ago that didn't survive, and we're showing those to, to be replaced along the westerly property line. Um, I think it's a pretty straightforward project this late at night.
Right. So, any questions from the board? I think we all have the staff report, correct? Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, summarizing, it complies with zoning and parking regulations, and he said the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Specific said it's appropriate location for use, structure and condition. Any other questions here? Anybody from the public? I don't see anybody online.
We did.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
I have a motion.
Right.
Well, we close the public hearing.
Yeah.
A second.
So, uh...
Time.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing is closed.
So, I move that we adopt the following, following findings of fact.
Thank you.
Uh, case, uh, PB 2023-21, applicant is Rick Roy Properties LLC, land owner is Rick Roy Construction LLC, and Brandon Donovan, applicant's representative, David Clark, PE from Clark Engineering LLC. Land owner's address is 123 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Location is 123 Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. Accessors Map 57, Lot G3-15-1. The zoning district is light industrial. The Barnstable County Registry of Deeds information is certificate 359-A. Development type is an infill development. Lot area is 72,745 square feet. Project description is the construction of a new 3,600-square-foot, two-bay steel and concrete warehouse for building and construction storage. The applicable laws and regulations, the site plan approval, special permit is pursuant to Section 325-51 and 325-55, the total of, of the Code of the Town of Harwich. The project review process, applicants representative submitted this application to the planning office and the town clerk on May 23rd, 2023. The public hearing notice was duly advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle on June 8th and June 15th, 2023. Copies of the application packet were sent to, uh, the following departments, inviting them to comment, including project, uh, the, on the project, including health, water, fire, conservation, public works, and police. The application documents include a form A and narrative, a misspelling certificate, site plan by Clark Engineering, dated 5/18/23, building plans A1 and A2 by RJR Management, five stormwater report by Clark Engineering LLC, dated 5/18/23, the board's application, and the application fee. The planning board held a public hearing on the site plan special permit on June 27th, 2023. Um, the, uh, further, the planning board finds that, um, the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, that the specific site in the application is an appropriate location for such a use, structure and condition. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians, and the adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
We have a motion, have a second from Mr. Peterson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I only have one comment about the last hearing. I worked, I worked for Dr. Fennel for 12 years, when he owned that property, and he used it for the same purpose. My property has been like that, and it was like a bad movie to have to hear it all over again.
We're not talking...
We have...
Okay.
Bill's back, Bill's back there going, nobody saw.
Some of four.
I won that one, I'm gone.
So, I, I move that the, um, planning board, um, approve a site plan, uh, special permit, um, subject to the following conditions, uh, that, let's see, that the, let me go back to something. The decision be recorded at the Registry, Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, that, as necessary and as will plan, be, be filed with the planning board, that any changes from the site plan review special permit be, are required to come before the planning board, before any changes can be made. And I think that's it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask the second one?
No, no, I'm done with my story. It was many moons ago.
Yeah, it was. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sorry I called you, Mr. DeShal. I was, like, looking at a piece of paper and like...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the minutes of...
A second.
Motion, any comments? Any amendations, corrections, deletions, mutilations?
A second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Second. All in favor? Aye.